Closest to the pin on that hole was four Phillies tickets. And you got a hole in one, and the Phillies were terrible. So I get two tickets.
I said, all right. I didn't want four.
But it was funny.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Dover City Council Meeting for September 22, 2014. We'll begin this evening with our invocation led by Bishop Tom Halsey, followed by the pledge to our nation's flag led by Councilman Dixon.
Father, we thank you for allowing us to come together once again to carry out the mandate for the community. We ask that you bless Dr. Madden and the loss of his lovely wife, and we thank you for comforting him. We thank you for watching over those that was killed in the bus accident in Newcastle County, that you comfort their family. Most of all, that you give us wisdom and knowledge according to your will that we can carry out the mandate at hand. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, gentlemen. Counsel, you have before you this evening's agenda other than the additions and deletions to be attended. If there's none, I'll move for approval as presented.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Hutchison, seconded by Mr. Dixon. The paper signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. What we have before us, the consent agenda, those items on the council's agenda that are considered routine and non-controversial or marked with an asterisk, they will be acted upon by a single roll called vote of council. There'll be no separate discussion of the items unless a number of council so requests, in which event the matter shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item, a pleasure of council.
New York seven.
Moved by Mr. Hare.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dixon. Except the consent agenda is submitted. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, possible.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Burza?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Item number two on the agenda this evening is a certificate of congratulations for Kraft Foods, which I think will have to defer to a later date. Mr. Mayor, if that is all right.
Certainly, it's pleasure, counsel.
Thank you very much, sir. To item number three, proclamation for cybersecurity awareness month. I'd invite Andy Siegel, the City of Dover IT Director, to join Mayor Christensen in Andy, it's good to see you.
Good to be seen.
Madam Clerk, could you read the proclamation into the record?
Whereas, we recognize the vital role that technology has in our daily lives and in the future of the city of Dover, whereby today many citizens, schools, libraries, businesses, and other organizations use the Internet for a variety of tasks, including keeping in contact with family and friends, managing personal finances, performing research, enhancing education, and conducting business. And whereas, critical sectors are increasingly reliant on information systems to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation, utilities, health, healthcare, and emergency response systems. Whereas, the use of the Internet at the primary and secondary school levels in our city enhances the education of youth by providing them access to online educational and research materials. And at institutions of higher education, the use of information technology is integral to teaching, learning, research, outreach, and service. And whereas, Internet users and our information infrastructure face increasing threats of malicious cyber attacks, invasion of privacy from spyware and adware, and significant financial and personal privacy loss due to identity theft and fraud. And whereas, maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role, and awareness of computer security essentials will improve the security of the city of Dover information infrastructure and economy. Now therefore, I, Robin R. Christensen, Mayor of the City of Dover, Delaware, do hereby proclaim October 2014 as Cybersecurity Awareness Month in the city of Dover, and urge all citizens to learn about cybersecurity and put that knowledge into practice.
Andy, on behalf of the mayor and council, and citizens of the city of Dover, I'd like to present this proclamation to you. And if you face the camera here. Step around this side so that... There you go. I think you'd like to give us a few words.
Thank you. The city's done a lot in the last year. We've actually got high-speed Internet. We passed a, we actually put into practice a new password policy and an acceptable use policy towards that end of cybersecurity. And as next month approaches, we'll be pushing out some more cybersecurity training that we've, a lot of this, a lot of the workers have already done those in the past, but they're revamped and new and a little bit easier and a little bit more up to date now. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Andy, before you leave, I think Councilman Hutchison has...
Well, Andy, certainly in behalf of council and all the employees of the city of Dover, I cannot, and certainly you're a mayor, it is so good to see you standing here tonight. I know that you personally have been through a lot as a result of your accident with the bicycle and being hit with a vehicle. And I know that there was a lot of people praying for you, so it's good to have you back.
Well, thank you. And since I have the microphone and the opportunity, I posted this on Facebook, but I want to say it for the record, I can't be more happy and proud of the people of the city of Dover and the employees. When that accident occurred, I had two electric trucks right there that came to my aid right away. And it wasn't because it was me that would have been there, no matter who it was, and I certainly appreciate that.
Andy, before you do, step aside. I would like to personally say thanks to you and the IT section and the city of Dover. I had, as you know, recent experience of having to hook up a new office in my other life without the city of Dover's assistance and professionalism in getting that done. It would cost the state of Delaware many thousands of dollars more than it would have, than it does. The city's contribution in terms of technical assistance and knowledge and know-how is to be lauded. A ten-year savings for the state of Delaware is a great pair, which is recognized somewhere in the neighborhood of $140,000. Without your technical know-how and assistance, that may not have been possible. Personally, I want to say thank you very much.
Thank you.
Quite an accomplishment. And to our city manager for facilitating this as well. Thank you to all of you, and thank you especially to the IT department. Item number three on the agenda this evening, B, is a proclamation of fire prevention week. I'd like to invite Councilman Hutchison, Detective Mayor Christensen, and Fire Chief Madam Clerk, if you could read the proclamation into the record.
Whereas, the city of Dover is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. And fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally. Whereas, in 2011, fire departments in the United States responded to 370,000 home-structured fires, which resulted in 13,910 injuries, 2,520 deaths, and $6.9 billion in damages. And whereas, almost three of five of reported home fire deaths from 2007 to 2011 resulted from fires in homes with no smoke alarms or no working smoke alarms. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. When smoke alarms fail to operate, it is usually because batteries are missing, disconnected, or dead. And whereas, the 2014 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Smoke Alarms Save Lives, Test Yours Every Month," effectively serves to remind us of the importance of testing smoke alarms every month. Now therefore, I, Robin R. Christensen, Mayor of the City of Dover, Delaware, do hereby proclaim October 5th through 11th, 2014, as Fire Prevention Week in the city of Dover, and urge all residents to make sure their smoke alarms are working properly and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of fire and emergency service personnel.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In my other life, I was a fire prevention officer for many years in the Dover Fire Department, and we used to see 3,500 kids every year, and I'm sure that tradition continues. I would always ask the kids, what does it mean when the, your smoke detector goes off at your house? And they'd all give you a blank look. And finally, one kid would put his hand up and he'd say, dinner's ready. So we know that the smoke detectors are working in some of the homes. Chief, we'd like to present this to you.
Thank you very much.
And we appreciate the service that the men and women of Robin's Hose Company perform for our city 365 days a year.
Thank you very much.
Well, let me just say this, Chief, and certainly I had the distinct honor of going with the Fire Chief many years ago when I was police chief, and we would go before this group of young students, and I would always get to speak first. And I would say, I have a question, and you're only allowed to answer this question, yes or no, once. And so the question was, when you grow up, would you like to be a police officer? And every hand went up. So when the Fire Chief got ready to ask, there was nobody, I said, no, you can't answer again. So, but Chief, on behalf of certainly the council, our staff, and the employees of the city, we cannot thank you and the men and women of the Fire Department for what you do for us. And fire prevention is something very important to all of us, and certainly we thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Just want to remind everybody in council and the citizens watching tonight that we are having an open house to jumpstart Fire Prevention Week on Saturday, October 4th. We're also going to be doing that in conjunction with the Breast Cancer Coalition to have three screenings for the public. So we encourage everyone to come down, please check our website, and also our social media page to get the exact times and dates. We're still working some things out, but it's going to be a great event. We're going to have lots of fire prevention props, tours of the facility, and obviously maybe some rides on the trucks, which everybody looks forward to. Maybe blow the sirens, the lights, you know, the fun stuff. We're looking forward to seeing, like the mayor said, over 3,500 kids this year. All the boys and girls were pretty much booked, but if you haven't gotten your times in yet, please call the firehouse as soon as possible. We're trying to get to as many schools and daycares as possible to try and get the word out of how important fire prevention is. And please, 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 remember to check the batteries in your smoke detectors, change them out. And if you have any questions whatsoever, please call us on our non-emergency line. And I thank all of you for your support, and if there's anything we can do to help not only just the Fire Prevention Week, but any other week, please let us know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. And on behalf of council, thank you to the Fire Department for what you do. I would remind people this is the only state capital left in the United States that has volunteer fire department. It's the, pretty highly, the men and women of the Fire Department for their dedication to training and to the number of hours that they have to give to begin their training for nothing. They do a heck of a job. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Item number 3C on the agenda is a proclamation for trick or treat. Madam Clerk, if you could read the proclamation into the record.
Whereas, the children of the city of Dover enjoy the fun and festivities associated with the observance of the Halloween trick-or-treat custom of traveling with friends and family going from door to door in their neighborhood, displaying their costumes and gathering treats. And whereas, parents are urged to join in the festivities by accompanying their children throughout their journey and celebrating Halloween trick-or-treat. And whereas, residents are requested to indicate their willingness to welcome children by keeping their fortune exterior lights on and that youngsters call only on homes with their light bulb. And whereas, the mayor of the city of Dover has deemed it advisable to observe the celebration of Halloween trick-or-treat on Friday, October 31, 2014, between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. Now therefore, I, Robin R. Christensen, Mayor of the City of Dover, Delaware, do hereby proclaim that the Halloween trick-or-treat observance be held on the 31st day of October 2014 between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. in the city of Dover, and urge all residents, both young and old, to make this a happy and safe occasion for our children.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Appreciate it. We hope everyone has a safe and happy Halloween. Enjoy yourselves, and most of all, be safe during the trick-or-treat process. Item number 4C on the agenda this evening is a progress report in the downtown development district application. Mr. Dixon?
I would refer us to Senator Flannan.
Thank you.
Director.
Mary.
Thank you. There was a memo that was distributed to the Parks Recreation and Community Enhancement Committee that identified some potential incentives that we would submit with our downtown development district application. At the last council meeting, you approved the district boundary map, so that's now the boundary that we're using to compile information. While the city does have a number of incentives, one of the things that the district application asks for is what additional incentives would the city be willing to offer for projects within the downtown development district. So, and with that in mind, there were several things in the memo that went out to the committee. I wanted to make sure they were discussed on the council floor because, you know, we're working on this, and when we have a complete application, we'll be bringing it forward, but I want to make sure it's very transparent, everything that we're suggesting, so that if there's something that doesn't make sense, it gets highlighted sooner rather than later. One of the things that was mentioned in that was the possibility of after, presuming that we do get the designation, after we've received the designation, to align the city's downtown redevelopment target area boundary with the downtown development district boundary. I know there was one council person on the Parks Recreation and Community Enhancement Committee who was not necessarily in favor of that. The concern on the staff's side was two, two things. One, there are things in the application where it says incentives that would apply only to the designated district. So if we're not going to look at shrinking it, we need to have that discussion with the state about, you know, our district's larger, so our incentives would apply broader. The other thing was just the confusion in having, there's a target area for housing, there's a, the downtown redevelopment target area, and now the downtown development district boundary is just one other boundary. So it's more just kind of the consistency makes it clearer to people who are looking to get the incentives as well as to those of us who are administering incentives. The incentives that we've, that we put in the memo were, one, that we would offer a waiver of business license fees for new businesses within the designated district for a period of three years. Another is a 50% rebate of the real estate transfer tax for development projects once they achieve a CO. So there's no, there's no incentive for just transferring land. It's transferring then developing, and then at CO you would get that rebate. Changes to the impact fee waivers and looking at how we might be able to better use the impact fees as incentives. Right now, impact fee waivers are only applicable when you have multi-story mixed-use development, so it could be changing it so that there, at least a portion of it is exempt for all redevelopment in the target area. And then the last one is actually not a city council one, it's something that I'm going to be bringing up to the Downtown Dover Partnership. But my recommendation here, and I talked to Greg Moore about this, is for the Downtown Dover Partnership to budget funds and to retain an architect so that they could support, my recommendation would be up to $5,000 in architectural services with an architect that would be, you know, selected through a competitive process to help some of these businesses that have very minor modifications or any to make. And a lot of them that we see have no intention of bringing an architect onboard, but because of building code, they have to. So we're left with, do we try to get around the code? Do we appeal the code? Or does it make sense to help them get in properly and just provide the resources to help do that? That is something that will be discussed at the DDP Board meeting this week. So that was all I wanted to brief you on where things stand now. You know, we're working very hard to pull together the information. There's a lot of information that is required for the application, but we're on a pretty good schedule, and I'm confident that we're going to meet it. But these were some specific incentives that we had talked about.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. Mr. Hutchison?
My question is, is there going to be a screening process for which, as these applications come before you, there will be reviewing these documents?
For the state money, their application would go directly to the state.
Okay.
And actually, Kent County is looking to expand it so that they would match the state's incentive up to $10,000. So that's just one additional incentive. Any incentives that the city would offer, we have a process now for screening them where the Economic Development Office looks at them. I usually look at them, and then ultimately, the city manager signs off on them. So anything that we would add, I think we would just keep the same structure set up.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions of Mrs. Townsley? No actions required on those items, but I'll now entertain a motion of accepting the committee report.
Yes, second. I make a motion to...
Only make the move. Make the motion. And seconded by Mr. Anderson. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
I also would like to encourage our communities to do the survey for the parks. And if you can't get to a survey, give us a call, and we'll get one out to you. We want to get as much we can out of this survey and designate what parks need what and work with from what you give us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. And there are no other questions on the motion. All those in favor signify by accepting the committee report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Item 5D, proposed financial reforms of the property tax governance. Councilman Slavin.
Thank you, Mr. President. The item before us was placed on the agenda and discussed at the September 8, 2014, meeting of the Legislative Finance Administration Committee. This item and a related item are part of the 14-part financial reform package that I had put before council at the conclusion of, in May 2014, at the conclusion of the budget deliberations concerning our current budget. Two of those proposed reforms related to property tax governance. There were two separate but related items. The first was council shall not raise the property tax more than 9.5% without first holding a referendum on the proposed tax increase. This provision shall not apply in those years when a revenue-neutral adjustment to the tax rate is required because of the property revaluation. And the second was council shall not raise the property tax more than 9.5% without two separate votes of a two-thirds majority vote of council, with the requirement that a municipal election occur before, between the first and second vote. And again, the same provision would apply about revenue-neutral adjustments held because of property revaluation. Legislative Finance Administration Committee discussed these items at some length during the course of our meeting and came to the following consensus. Mr. Anderson moved to recommend that the proposed financial reform number nine, council shall not raise the property tax more than 9.5% without first holding a referendum on the proposed tax increase. This provision, and I mentioned, shall not apply. He, Mr. Anderson, asked that that be referred to staff for drafting as an ordinance and that an opinion be attained from the city solicitor regarding whether it should be prepared as an ordinance or a charter change. The motion was seconded by Mr. Sudler and carried unanimously. Financial reform number 10 was then tabled by unanimous vote of the committee as the intent of the reform was met with the passage of recommendation of reform number nine. This package of financial reforms is intended to further tighten controls we have over the city's finances. These have included previously passed reforms on the use of a public safety fund to correlate the receipt of property taxes to direct public safety expenses and placing restrictions on appropriations. These reforms are intended to identify those areas where additional financial discipline is needed, with the net effect being that these reforms will not only govern our expenditure of funds, but also influence how we budget future expenses prior to the appropriation of funds. Mr. Koenig has asked that this item be removed from the consent agenda for additional discussion on the floor tonight, and I am honoring that request. I am still very much in favor of this reform and see it as a critical step in ensuring our city's long-term financial health while also promoting full transparency. But I will yield to Mr. Koenig.
Thank you, Mr. Slavin. Mr. Koenig?
Thank you. My concern, as I indicated at the committee level, is we have been having an ongoing debate about the potential need for a tax increase in the general fund. If you recall, the draft budget this year included a 7.22 cent tax increase in the general fund to address requests from the prior year from council regarding infrastructure improvements as well as address general operating expenses. Ultimately, after, I think it was five or more sessions of debate at the budget hearings, we elected to transfer $2 million from the electric revenue fund to balance the budget. And Mrs. Mitchell, in the five-year projections, indicates that that $2 million transfer, assuming we keep it at $10 million, addressed a number of the tax increases, but we still have significant pressure on the general fund. And my comment is more one of cautionary, I think, in the sense that if we add the requirement of a public referendum in, we're probably pushing the budget presentation back up into March, February, where the numbers are less solid than they are by the time we get to the May numbers. So we're working off of more of a estimated number the further we get back from the June 30th or July 1st date. And there's additional costs and work that's associated with a public referendum because we will have to go out and we'll have to basically advocate for the budget throughout the city to gain support. Otherwise, we will probably be doing a disservice to the city by not going out and doing that type of presentation across the city. This is going to add significant amount of time and effort to the budget discussions. And on the flip side to that, if you'll recall, even after the papers showed the 7.22 cent proposed increase, we had a relatively small handful of people that came into the city. We had some that wrote letters, we had some that sent emails, a number of calls came in. But the general participation, in my opinion, was relatively low, even with that proposed increase. From the budgetary standpoint, if we're going to do that route, or we're going to go that route, we need to really make adjustments going forward to accommodate that potential referendum avenue. So provided that this proposal passes, I'm not sure that we'll be prepared for a referendum for fiscal year 16, obviously, which would limit us to bring forth a budget that would be within the 9.5% prescriptive, prescriptive numbers that would be outlined. That may or may not be a budget that council would like to consider. The last, coming out of the last council or budget meetings, the general consensus was that coming into this year's budget, council would like to see several options presented at the budget hearings in May. And that's what we will begin preparing for very shortly. So if this is the direction that council wishes to go... So if this is the direction that council wishes to go, we have a lot of work to do to meet that referendum requirement. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Conick. Any questions, members of council? Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Koenig, I thank you for your remarks. Now, would you consider it a bad thing for if, for a reason, we had a tax increase that was greater than 10%? If it had the support of the people? How would that be a negative?
I'm not saying that's a negative. I'm just saying that 10% in the city of Dover equates to about 3.5 cents on the property tax rate. And every penny raises about $315,000. So if you decided you wanted to pave a million dollars more worth of streets next year, that could throw you into a referendum.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Conick, Mr. Hutcherson.
Mr. President, thank you. My question to the city manager and finance director, in the last seven years, how many tax increases have we had?
I think the only tax increases we've had have been related to revaluation. And I do not recall the exact.
Okay. My follow-up question is, how many times have we taken from the electric fund or the reserve fund? How many times have we taken money from those funds in order to meet the general fund budget just to be able to meet our budget needs in the last seven years?
Last year, as I said, we transferred $2 million from the electric fund to balance the budget. The prior year, we proposed bringing forward unused revenue, Mrs. Mitchell, correct me if I'm wrong, unused revenue from the 13 budget to balance the 14 budget. And then the prior year before that, we went and we adjusted the, we adjusted CIPs, but we adjusted the trash fee to basically balance the budget. And then going back to, I think it was 2011 or 2012, we changed the electric transfer from a percent of the total budget. It was 8% of total budget, total electric revenue, to an $8 million flat transfer. So we had an $8 million flat transfer in fiscal 14, 13, and 12, I believe. And then prior to that, it was adjusted based on percent of revenue. Mrs. Mitchell indicated, we believe we had adjustments to the tax rate in fiscal 10 and fiscal 6 associated with reassessments. So those were the tax increases associated with reassessments.
Thank you.
Mr. Herr.
This is probably sound like a broken record. I've said this before, I'll say it again, and a few other things. The general fund, there's not a whole lot of funds in the city that can stand on their own. The electric utility was created years ago before any of us that were here, and it was created and run to keep the property tax low. The revenues from the electric utility support, basically support, a lot of the funds in the city, police department. I mean, the money goes wherever it needs to go, and it's used that way. So if there's money in the electric fund that we put into the budget, I don't care, and I've told Mrs. Mitchell this. The only numbers I really want to know is how much revenue does the city bring in? How much money do we spend? How much is in our reserves? I mean, that's, I don't care if it comes from electric, water, gas, heat, trash, wherever it comes from, it's still all city money. The other side of this coin is, we had a city manager, and I think we need to go back to that, because we've kind of tied, it seems like we tie our current city manager's hands an awful lot. When we had a city manager here, Mr. O'Connor, we told him, you do what you have to do, bring us a budget, don't raise taxes rates and fees. He'd bring us a budget, and for the most part, we didn't really know what he did. He just said, here's the budget, we're not raising anything. We don't let Mr. Koenig do that. I think we should give him the opportunity to do that. Bring us a budget that doesn't have any increases, see what happens. I mean, don't, we shouldn't be trying to tell him what to do. He's the city manager, he's the one that knows what goes on, and if he can't do it, then get someone who can. But I think he can. But we got to untie his hands and let him do it. I just think we need to give him that opportunity to show us he can do this.
Thank you, Mr. Herr. Mr. Slavin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't speak for Mr. Koenig, but I will say this to Councilman Herr. I would guess he would love to have had the revenue streams increased the way Mr. O'Connor did in many of the years' budgets that he had, and the ability to deliver budgets without increases.
I don't think we'd be having this debate.
I think we all would, right? Just a few points. This is really intended to be a council governing itself, right? That's what this is intended. This is not meant to clip Mr. Koenig or to handcuff him or anything like that. This is rules that we're going to set for ourselves that we're going to obey, which basically says that if we want to raise taxes by a million dollars, ask the voters. It's simple math. If you want to raise taxes by a million dollars, ask the voters. If you want to raise taxes by more than 9.5%, ask the voters. And I know Mr. Koenig had said it would be a disservice to the city by not going out and advocating for that budget and having a referendum. What better way to avoid that disservice than to invite every voter in the city to participate in that decision? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Slavin. Mr. Perza.
I guess my position on this was, I think that the elected representatives of the city have been elected by the people to make decisions on behalf of the people in their districts and to apply the judgment that they've advocated for in the process of choosing the representatives. I think we're all capable of making the decision of whether or not to raise taxes or to not raise taxes based on the information provided in all the books and manuals and slides and overheads and all the presentations we sit through in the budget hearings and on the spring, whatever those things, the budget conferences and everything that we have. When we formulate these decisions, we're meeting with members of our community, we're talking with people in our community. So I think we all have a sense on what people that live down the street from us in our communities want us to do. I think we're adding extra layers of bureaucracy if we have to start having micro-management of city management decisions. I recognize there is some big decisions that might have to be made at some point, but ultimately, if we go against the will of the people, we're going to hear about it and ultimately will be replaced with somebody else who will be eventually doing that. I just, on a tax increase and spending money, I'm probably the cheapest person in this room, and my claw marks will be pulled on across a desk before raising taxes on somebody. But from the standpoint of, I guess philosophically, I think is, we're here to make those decisions. If you don't trust us to make those decisions, we're the wrong persons to be sitting at these desks. And I don't think any of us take the decision to raise taxes lightly. It has direct consequences on every household of every house in our district, and I don't think I need extra precautions governing ourselves if we can't make that decision ourselves. If I can't make that decision, I shouldn't be here. So I guess that's my position. I probably agree with Mr. Koenig's position that I think we're opening the door to extra administrative oversight and costs that we didn't anticipate by adding extra layers to adding tax increases. That said, I don't like tax increases.
Thank you, Mr. Perza. Mr. Herr, then Mr. Anderson.
Well, I was going to kind of follow along with what Mr. Perza kind of said. What I was going to say is, I can remember years ago, Mr. Wyant telling us, if we got to ask the people every time we want to do something, then we shouldn't be here. He says, you do what you feels right, and if they don't like it, they won't reelect you. And he said, then you go home and pour yourself a drink and think about what just happened. He said, that ain't all bad. So I agree with Mr. Perza to a certain degree. We do have things in place where we do have to have a referendum. If we spend a certain amount of money, we do have to ask the people. And a prime example would be the Pitt Center, which that referendum didn't pass. People didn't vote for it. So then we went back out and redid it to make it underneath the referendum amount, so we didn't have to get a referendum and build it anyhow, and didn't put air conditioning in it to keep it under. So now we're spending the money now to put air conditioning in it, and that's a prime example of what happened when it got built against the wishes of the people. Everybody remembers back in 2000, the big turnover on council. So I think Mr. Perza is right, and I don't disagree with, in principle, about the tax increase. I'm with Mr. Perza. I'll be clawing right along with him to fight to raise taxes, and I think everybody knows that. But I don't know, I just don't know if we should have a referendum for tax increase, but maybe some other things.
Mr. Herr, Mr. Anderson, and Mrs. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I favor this, Mr. Slavin's proposal because it makes sense. It makes sense economically. One of the biggest factors against economic development is uncertainty. When you add a level of certainty in budgeting, that means Dover becomes friendlier for jobs. It becomes friendlier for economic development. It becomes more attractive place for people to open businesses and for people to relocate businesses. When you have a certainty that says, yeah, there may be a tax increase, but if it's going to have to happen, we're not going to get socked with an increase that's more than 10% in a year. It's going to happen gradually. I mean, we're not talking pennies. We're not talking about you can't raise taxes or taking away council's flexibility. We're not talking about that. But we're talking about for significant tax increases. Those are the tax increases that demand a public input, that demand a public buy-in. There really is very little that can't be done over time. And that's what people keep saying they want. They don't want to be socked with the idea of 20, 30% tax increase all of a sudden. If, they want things that can be budgeted, that can be, where there's an economic certainty. What passing this policy would do, with a referendum, by the way, according to our current charter, wouldn't be binding. If we really felt after the referendum that we still needed to do it, we could do it. Now, chances are, if a referendum said no, particularly if it was overwhelming, we wouldn't. But it's a, but it's, but having people involved, having the input in the system, and having the value of economic certainty, which means jobs, which means economic security for the people of this city, is, I believe, a good proposal, and I'm glad to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mrs. Williams, and Mr. Perza, and Mr. Herr.
I've been listening very carefully to both sides. I have strong feelings about both sides. I think the argument is well-taken. I remember, though, two things that have bothered me since I've been elected. One is the way we raise taxes. We always find a ghost excuse as to, well, we're going to put it into an electric rate in hike, or we're going to use a trash fee, instead of coming right out and saying we need more money to run the city. I don't like that. I've never liked that as a method to raise taxes from the public. I also don't like the fact that the library got built without a referendum when the public was screaming for one. I think it's been a good thing for the city, but I also know how many people who really thought they had not been given the opportunity to have their say in that. I don't want to tie Mr. Koenig's hands behind his back at all. I believe he's fully competent and fully capable of doing whatever we ask him to do and bringing us things we may not have even thought of. But at some level, I don't know that we will follow our own best judgment unless we're pushed by the citizens of this city. In the past, we've been very manipulative, and so I'm inclined to say perhaps the best way to handle this is with a referendum, so it stops all of the game plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Perza, Mr. Herr, then Mr. Slavin.
My comment is, kind of back to Mr. Anderson, is if we got to the point of raising taxes 20, 30%, regarding certainty, is I guarantee you, the second district would be very certain that I will not be voting to raise taxes by 20%. We don't need a referendum for that. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Herr.
I guess, I just have a question, maybe Mr. Slavin will address it when he speaks. This past year, let's say we, this was in effect, and we were going to raise taxes 23% because we needed the money, okay? And we put it out to a vote, and it votes down. Then we can raise it 9.5%, but we're still 14% short. So then what? That's where I'm kind of missing some of this. If we need 23% tax increase, and we've got to do it, wait for two votes to do it, I'm missing where the money's going. If we don't raise it 23%.
Can I offer an answer?
Well, you're next. If we don't raise it 23%, then we can only raise it 9.5%. So we're 14% short. So we don't have enough money to run the city. So we're either going to have to lay people off, we're going to cut services, we're going to have to do something. Or we're going to find the money, which tells me then we didn't need to raise it 23%. So that's kind of what's going through my mind right now, so maybe you can address that.
Thank you, Mr. Slavin, then Mr. Hutcherson.
Thank you.
Quick answer is, I think there's many options. The first would be, cut your expenses. And the second is, do what you did this year. You were faced with more than 20% tax increase, and we got by with a 0% tax increase.
Which tells me we didn't need to raise taxes 23%.
Well, perhaps.
That's the whole thing, that's what I'm saying.
If you did it in a healthy way.
If we can cut our expenses to save money, then we should be doing that anyhow.
So I'll just offer that, you know, these are presented as a package, and this one, I think, is an important one. And it speaks to a very fiscally disciplined, fiscally conservative policy. It has transparency attached to it, and it has accountability attached to it. And I support it, and I supported it when I introduced it, and I'll stand behind it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slavin, and Mr. Hutcherson.
One of the things I strongly feel, I really feel very strongly about, that the city of Dover needs to fine-tune our operation, putting some real strong measures in place. But when it comes to raising taxes, I can flat-out tell you that I take a great deal of pride of serving as an elected official of this city. And I do my homework when it comes to knowledge, knowing the budget, knowing what the needs are. And the point in question that came about as a result, the city manager made a proposal. But because of the elected officials in this city working with the city manager, we came back with a different plan, and we didn't have to raise taxes. And that's why elected officials working with the city manager, working with the finance director, we all worked together to address the issues and concerns facing our citizens. And quite frankly, I think that when you get ready to put something up for a referendum, I certainly look around the room, and each and every one of us work very hard to know what the jobs are as far as what we're talking about in increasing the tax increase. And the track record speaks for itself. We don't increase taxes too much in this city. And there's no other city in the state that has a track record like we have when it comes to increasing taxes. So I think it speaks well of ourselves, but I also share some deep concerns that I'm not like some that thinks that you can continue to take it from our reserves and take it from our electric fund and continue to drill, bring it down and down. We, at some point, going to have to increase taxes. But I think that burden belongs on each and every one of us as elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutcherson. Mr. Herr, then Mr. Perza.
Thinking on that, I don't think I have a problem going along with this. I just don't want to see it implemented in a, something that is a permanent thing. I'd like to see it have a, I don't know what you want to call it, a twilight, where we do it, we give it a probationary period to see.
Probably a sunset, Mr. Herr.
To see how, to see how it does perform, and not making it something that's going to to take an act of Congress to eliminate it. And then I'd be willing to give it a shot and see what happens.
Thank you, Mr. Hare. Mr. Persa, then Mr. Anderson.
My comment, I just, I do appreciate efforts made by Mr. Slavin and the committee to think of methods that are fiscally conservative that would protect the city's interest and taxpayers' interest moving forward. I mean, I told you what I philosophically think, but I'm open to the suggestions and working with it. If there's some mechanisms that we can put in there to accommodate states of emergency, my scenario is that you have Hurricane Katrina come through, or tornado wipes out half the city. We're going to have to do something. We don't have time to do referendums and things like that. So I would imagine that something could be adopted as part of that to accommodate state of emergency type of requests, whether it's a supermajority vote of council to say, we don't have to do a referendum under circum circumstances. I'm open to considering that type of mechanism.
Mr. Anderson.
And I thank you, I think that can definitely be a part, Mr. President, of the, of when an ordinance is actually drawn up. It is, I'd like to remind everyone that this is basically getting the legal opinion to get an ordinance drawn up, and all of the concerns that are expressed would be incorporated, I would assume. Because I know the sponsor, he's a pretty reasonable person, and all the concerns really would be incorporated when that time comes. But the reason why it's important to move forward is this financial reform is the one that makes all of the others work. It's the one that makes the spending packages work, which makes the negotiations work, because if this is in place, when the time comes and if we have to face an arbitrator, and they're saying, oh, what can you do? There's something that our side can actually point to that says there's a limit to what can be paid out, and that will go in our favor. This reform here is the one that makes all of the others work, and that's why we need to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any other comments? Mr. Slavin?
I would only suggest to council that when we consider what we do here as members of this legislative body, we're like any other legislative body. People elect us to do a job, and they trust our judgment based on our experience, are able to relate to them what we do as members of council, and how we respond to them as constituents of ours. I have a real philosophical difference in that I believe that the ultimate referendum is the term of our office. We need to make decisions, raise taxes. Sometimes we're going to be forced into positions where we might have to raise taxes more than nine and a half percent without an election in between and voting twice. Those are things that we're going to have to be faced with as elected members of city council. And I think, like I said, the ultimate referendum is the referendum of the people who put us into these chairs. And I think if we don't answer to them, they're going to remove us. It's as simple as that. And I tend to, I side with Mr. Persa in this. None of us wants to raise taxes. But we've had the luxury for many years of having reserves that we can utilize to help balance the budget. The fact remains, in the very near future, in the not-too-distant future, we're going to be faced with a distinct possibility, because it is a service-oriented government here in the city, of raising taxes more than nine and a half percent. I think that's a distinct possibility. I think this is good food for thought, though. I think there's room for compromise, and judging from what Mr. Anderson has said and judging what others have said, I think there is room for compromise. I think we can find a way of getting some control. But I think, you know, we hired the city manager, we hired the finance director, and we're elected by the people to do a job. If these guys don't bring us about a budget that's balanced enough and without causing this undue financial pain, it's up to us to replace them, find somebody who can do the job. We can't cut our way into a balanced budget year after year. I just feel very strongly about it. Mr. Slavin.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, given the, trying to sum up the dialogue here, I will move that the financial reform number nine shall be referred to staff and legal counsel for drafting as an ordinance with the provision that council, in the drafting of the ordinance, that council may vacate the provisions in times of unforeseen emergencies.
Second.
By Mr. Slavin, second by Mr. Dixon to refer this to staff to offer a solution to this perplexing problem. Questions on the motion? Mrs. Williams.
Would the maker of the motion, how does the maker of the motion feel about the sunset possibility?
Yeah, I'd be open to that. Do you want to offer friendly amendment?
About four years?
Four years.
Four years after implementation.
Four year after, or so the amendment would be four years after implementation.
Well, it would be reviewed.
Be reviewed.
In four years.
Thank you for reminding me of that. I apologize, Mr. Hare.
Yeah, it would be reviewed in four years to see how it's.
Is that your motion, Mrs. Williams? Your amendment, I'm sorry, and the maker is?
Yes.
On the second. The first thing we do is we vote on the amendment, which would be that reviewed after four years. Questions on the amendment? None? Madam Clark, call the board.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
Are we just voting on just the sunset?
Just the amendment, just the sunsetting amendment.
Not the other one?
Not yet.
I don't want to see it all be together.
Yes.
I would remind council members that also included in this is a suggestion that this could be vacated in case of an emergency.
Well, that was my question. Do we vote on?
Do we vote on both of the amendments?
The original motion I made was to recommend it for drafting as an ordinance with the provision that it could be vacated.
Could be vacated.
The amendment was to sunset.
Amendment was to sunset. Review it after four years. Everybody clear on the motion for the amendment? Go ahead.
Thanks, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutcherson?
No.
Mr. Bell?
Yes. Motion carries seven. Now we have the full motion, which is to refer to item number nine to staff to come back with a referendum. Any questions on the motion? Madam Clark, call the board.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
No.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutcherson?
No.
Mr. Bell?
Yes. Motion carries six to.
Second half of this, I just. The next discussion will be the review of hiring by council for senior positions. Mr. Slavin.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item was also brought before Legislative Finance and Administration Committee at its previous meeting. This was a idea that was posited by Councilman Hare to provide for a review of higher-paid positions in the city, and I will defer to Mr. Hare. The committee did unanimously, or by a vote, excuse me, of four to one, recommend this. And again, Mr. Koenig has asked for it to be considered tonight on the floor. I'll defer to Mr. Hare if he wants to explain it.
I think this, my feeling is, we still do not have, in what I feel, the form of government that we know what we want. Do we want a full-time mayor? Do we want a city manager type of government? Do we want a mayor-council form of government? And if we're going to have something where we're going to hire, and that's 75 or 80 can be raised to 100,000, you know, positions over 90 or 100,000, whatever, that's whatever. But if we're going to have a full-time mayor, then we need to delineate what his responsibilities are going to be, and we might not need to hire an assistant city manager. We might not need to hire some of the other positions. We might not need some that we have. I think to keep adding people and not know what type of government we're going to have does not make sense. It's just, we're just adding people, adding people, and then we're going to decide what we're going to do. Well, I think we need to decide, and I think we're putting the cart before the horse. Let's decide what horse we're going to have to pull the cart or lead the cart, and then we can hire people. If we're going to have a full-time mayor, I mean, we can't have what I say we've had for years as a BL, a BLD mayor, breakfast, lunch, and dinner mayor. I mean, if we're going to have responsibilities for the mayor, let's give him the responsibilities. Let's give him something in writing that he's got to be responsible for, and I'm not opposed to paying him. I mean, what we're paying, if we're going to have a full-time mayor, you expect something out of, well, you got to pay him. Pay him some money. You know, don't expect somebody to work for what he's working for if you're going to expect him to do something. If you're going to have a ceremonial mayor that just does breakfast, lunches, and dinners, cuts ribbons, things like that, all right, well, then make him a part-time position and give the responsibility to the city manager and an assistant city manager, if that's what, we're going to have a city manager form of government. I think we need to decide what we're going to do, and then we can see who we need to hire. You know, I think, anyhow, that's where.
Thank you, Mr. Hare, Mr. Hutcherson.
I think Councilman Hare certainly makes a good point tonight. I would just, and at some point this evening, we're going to get a chance to talk about this, but I think it's way past the time to look at the organization of this city. Under the current structure, city manager reports the total of nine members of council, nine bosses he has, and he also has a mayor. It used to be the mayor presided over the council meeting, and we had eight members of council. Quite frankly, I think that this body, members of council, should have absolutely nothing to do with the operation of the city.
Agreed.
Our job is to set policy, and that's what we should be doing. You have your city manager who becomes the chief operating officer, who reports to the mayor. We set policy, but back when they changed, and we had the consent decree, the mayor was removed from this chamber, and ultimately, we ended up with the council president. Under the day's current structure, the council president becomes the most powerful elected official we have in this city. Why? He or she controls the agenda. He or she also appoints all chairpersons of every committee. And it's time that this city, we, the elected officials of this city, do what we're supposed to do, and let's get a city government that works. And quite frankly, I think that our city manager should become the chief operating officer and let him run the budget. Let him run and be responsible for the city, and take politics out of it. So I think the point's well taken, and quite frankly, I look forward to having further discussion this evening on this matter.
Thank you, Councilman Hutcherson. Any other comments? Kind of strayed off of what the initial suggestion was in item number F, because that was titled "Review of Hiring by Council for Senior Positions," and it only referred to the review of senior positions with 75,000 to 80,000 when they. Mr. Slavin?
Well, I think Mr. Anderson has.
All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a bit of a concern with this proposal in that it's in the city council. Once we vetted, evaluated the position, had staff justify the position, then put it in the budget, had Legislative and Finance look at it, then had budget hearings where the entire council looked at it, and then had it approved, I really do not see the value of then having the city manager, when he's about to hire somebody, to come back before us and check again. I mean, we've already looked at it five different times. There's a point where you have to say, let's trust them, we've approved it, let's do it. That's my particular opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Mr. Slavin?
Well, I did, the item was pulled off the consent agenda at the request of Mr. Koenig. I think in fairness, we should hear from Mr. Koenig.
So I was waiting until everyone else had their opportunity to speak. I was going to call Mr. Dixon.
I'd like to say this. If you're going to have an elected official which is a mayor.
We're straying away from what this discussion is. Mr. Koenig. Go ahead, Mr. Dixon.
I'll comment right before that. I mean, the model that this, I think what Mr. Hare was getting at, the model that this is based after, on is in the federal government and the state government as well. It's the appointment of senior-level, highest-paid officials in government with the consent of the legislative body. It's as simple as that. Some people in this room are appointed with the consent of the legislative body, and it just, that's how it occurs, and I think that was the intent. So, thank you. I'll be interested to hear what Mr. Koenig has to say.
Thank you, Mr. Slavin, Mr. Koenig.
Thank you. The, I think the charter is pretty clear. We're a council-manager form of government. That's what's stated in the charter. To my knowledge, nowhere in the past has a city manager for department heads that report to him come before council for confirmation of people. So that would be, in my opinion, a complete reversal and change of how we've operated in the past, unless there's something that's happened that I'm not aware of in the last 20-plus years. I have been discussing the assistant city manager position since December of last year. It went through the retreat process, it went through the budget hearings, it went through budget approval. We are in the process of interviewing and very soon to make an offer, in my opinion. But I'm confused, to say the least, by the discussion about this position, because I've been right up front about it from the very beginning when we started talking about it at the retreat. The council expressed concern that not enough was getting done out of my office. This was my requested remedy for that, and I have progressed in that direction ever since. If you kind of start drawing the line between 75, 80, 90, 100,000 dollars, in my opinion, it's arbitrary, and it is unnecessary. So council obviously will do what you wish, but I don't believe that this is necessary, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Koenig. Comments? Mr. Persa?
I agree with Mr. Koenig and Mr. Anderson.
That's about the most succinct comment we've had tonight. Thank you. Mrs. Williams.
Get ready for this one. Me, too.
Now that most everyone else has spoken, I will reiterate what I said a little bit ago. I think we do need definite job description for the mayor. Delineate what some of the job responsibilities are. But I think that the council, or city manager, council form of government has worked pretty well for the city, in my view, the last 40 years. It's worked pretty well. There was a time when the mayor was arguably the most powerful person in the city government, but that's because we had a mayor that had a very powerful personality. Times have changed. The proffered carols are gone. The other members that have served in this body over the years are gone, and it's up to us to set a charter, a chart, a course forward as to where we want to go as a body, and whether or not we want to continue this form. I happen to think that it's been working pretty well. I'm not too displeased, but I'm certainly not so closed-minded.
I'm not too displeased with it, but I'm certainly not so closed-minded that I can't discuss it amongst ourselves and come up with a solution. As to the comment about the council president being the most powerful elected person in this room, I will say to you, I don't think that's the case. I disagree, because when I appointed members of committees, I became council president, and I talked to them, I saw out the people that I thought would most easily fill those jobs, given their outside responsibilities and knowing what their interests were in operating the city. And it's not a question of power politics, it's a question of taking those who are elected and being able to ferret out the ones that have the best knowledge of the areas or the committees which they serve as chairs of these committees. In addition, you poll the people that you pick as the chairs of these committees, and you say, who do you think would serve well as a civilian member? Or it's up to you to search out that civilian member. You each know, in your particular committee's circumstances, the people that you have brought on as civilian members of these committees. Sometimes there might be a disagreement, but to suggest that the president is the most powerful person on this body, I think is not correct. We try to act, we could be, I suppose we could be, we wanted to be. That's not what this is about. The president's job is to allow you guys to have plenty of opportunity to push your concerns and your opinions on the floor and to facilitate the discussion amongst us as a legislative body, and I think that's the primary focus of what a council president should do. They need to lead you in discussion so it's easier for you to make the decision. Mr. Hare, then Mr. Hutchison.
Okay, what I've just heard is we're a council, we're a city manager council, or council manager form of government.
That's correct.
Okay, then we don't need a full-time mayor. And working with the league of cities, which I don't do that often, but calling them, we're, I'm out to about almost four hundred miles, and we have yet to find a city with a population under forty thousand, well, I don't give a darn if it's a capital city, whatever it is, but population under forty thousand with a full-time mayor. So we're still, in my opinion, just my opinion, if we're going to be a city, a council manager form of government, okay, that's fine. Then the city manager makes a decision, he hires or whatever, but if we're going to have a full-time mayor, that's, we don't need it. I mean, let's decide, are we council manager, are we strong, whatever. Right now, we're a hybrid, because the city, if we're a council, truly a council, a manager form of government, then we don't have, the council's responsible for Donna Mitchell, and the mayor's responsible for Chief Burnett, and the city manager's not responsible but for, we hold him accountable for maybe forty percent of the city. But when the other sixty percent gets messed up, we go to him. Why does he have to prepare, be responsible, present the budget for the whole city? What didn't the mayor present it for the police department? And hold him accountable for that, and hold someone else accountable for whatever? I mean, let's, let's get it where it needs to be, and I don't have a problem with, every way we decide to go, let's do it.
I think we're going a little astray there for a minute. Go ahead.
Well, that's what this, this might be why it was there.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Well, I would like to comment on you, Mr. President, and I agree, you do a good job as council president. Please do not misunderstand. You sit in the most powerful position as an elected official of the city. It cannot be argued. How you choose to manage it, you do a great job with it, but you still hold the most powerful position in the city. All I'm saying is, as we move forward to discuss this, when I look at a mayor who puts in forty, fifty hours a week, and unfortunately, I go to a lot of council meetings, committee meetings and such, and it's amazing how many times I don't get to see some members of council, and I realize they got full-time jobs. They can't be here, but that's why we have a full-time mayor who can be. So quite frankly, I am very much in favor of looking at supporting a full-time mayor, presiding over council, and helping to bring us back, and I don't want to talk about it any further, but please understand when it comes to being, who has most authority? The council president does.
There's a difference between power and leadership.
Well, I understand that.
And that's what this, that's what this position is supposed to be. It's not supposed to be a power position, it's supposed to be a leadership position, that will value and guide you in your discussions on council floor. Mrs. Williams.
Having shared that chair, I understand what you're talking about, but I believe, if I may, I think that Councilman Hutchinson's talking about a council president that would want to use it for other purposes, and the power is there in the chair to do that. You don't, a lot of council presidents choose not to, I think to their credit, but some people do.
Thank you, Madam. Yes, Mr. Persa?
Could the council president apply the power of your office to bring the discussion on F to a close by limiting discussion to just?
I have, I have, I have. Call the question.
Call the question.
There is no question.
There is no question.
There is no question.
All right, moving on. All right, let's, let's discuss, let's take a vote on the review of the hiring by council for senior positions at the request of Mr. Slavin. The committee recommended that the council review senior positions with salaries of seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars when they could. Is that the motion?
Mr. Hare, is that?
Mr. Hare, is that such your needs?
You know what? I'll withdraw the recommendation, and let's hire all the people we want, and then when we come back this fall, we want to raise taxes, fine.
Are you offering to table the motion?
So I'll table it.
Thank you, the motion is tabled.
There was no motion.
There was no motion.
So I'll make a motion. I hope that we accept the report of Legislative Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Slavin.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. All those in favor, I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson, question on the motion.
On the motion, we accept it, and item F has been withdrawn, is that correct? So it's without item F? Okay, thank you.
All right.
Question? Does that make, does that make the city manager happy? Is that acceptable?
I honestly couldn't tell you at the moment what was the, so what's, what's the proposal?
What's been done is that's been withdrawn, you want to go hire a hundred and thirty thousand dollar assistant or something, you can go right ahead and do it.
What you have in the pipeline, is that?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And are questions on the motion? Acceptance of the committee report. Item number F has been withdrawn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number six, final reading, proposed ordinance 2014-21 with staff amendment number one. First reading of the following proposed ordinance was accomplished during the council meeting of September eighth, two thousand fourteen. Copies of the proposed ordinance are available at the entrance of council chambers. First, I'll entertain a motion to consider a final reading by title only, which is simply to allow the waiving of the reading.
So moved.
Severer motion will be necessary for its adoption. By Mr. Hare?
Second.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Proposed ordinance 2014-21 with staff amendment number one, mending chapter forty-six, fire prevention and protection, article one in general. Mrs. Townsend.
Thank you. Again, this is the ordinance that sets a standard for bollards that are installed to protect LP gas and natural gas fixtures from impact of primarily vehicles. At the first reading, Mr. Persa, I believe, had requested that we provide a definition for bollards. In doing that, the city clerk determined that the definitions were spread throughout chapter forty-six, which made it very difficult to follow definitions from one section to another. So what she, what we have done, I'll give her the credit for the work, is there is now in the staff amendment a new section, forty-six dash zero definitions, where all of the definitions throughout forty-six have been pulled out, again, for clarity, and the remainder of the ordinance stays the same. So the amendment is more just organizing section or chapter forty-six so that the definitions are centrally located. I believe this was sent out to council last week, and the feedback received from one council person, I think a couple council people was favorable, given the choice between fixing the code or just shoehorning a definition in, in an area that it wouldn't necessarily make sense. So again, the principal purpose of the ordinance is to add standards for installation of bollards around natural gas and LP gas fixtures to absorb any impact from vehicles when they sometimes drive off the parking lots, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. Mrs. Williams, she had her hand up.
I just found it remarkable that we redefine barbecuing. Are you, are you expecting foul to be near the bollards when the impact occurs?
I hope not.
Okay.
Just call it barriers.
Any other, any further questions on staff?
Why don't we just call it barriers?
I don't know, but I'm going to go ballerin'.
Bollards, barriers, bollards, the things that slide into the ground, is that correct?
Well, these would be.
Stanchions.
Fastened, well fastened into the.
Or poles.
Stanchions.
Poles.
Why don't we call them poles?
All right, first of all, we have, what's the pleasure of council with regard to staff amendment number one?
We've adopted of staff amendment one.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Second by Mr. Dixon. Questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
We've got a bollard question.
Is the question the definition, or the amendment one the definitions? Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
There's no limit on colors of the bollards, is there?
There are limits on colors of the bollards.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, what's the pleasure of council with regard to ordinance 2014-21 as a.
Second.
Just read it.
Mr. Slavin.
Move.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Williams. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Councilmember's announcements. Mr. Slavin? I was going, I was going to take a moment and just, when you're finished, if you have other announcements.
I just wanted to, now, Councilman Lynn had asked me to extend his apologies for not being present tonight. He is with the Mattern family at the funeral there. I know he's very close to that family.
Thank you, that's very kind of you. I know that there was a long line, very long. I'd also like to take an opportunity to wish Mrs. Williams a very happy birthday.
Say that quickly, please.
Well, I mean, she's sixteen, so.
We all know better than that. We know she's twenty-nine.
But she likes barbecued flavored bollards.
There you go. All right, there are no further items on the agenda this evening. Anything else for the good of the order, move we adjourn?
I'll adjourn.
Second by Mr. Dixon, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.